The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 12, 2024. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in township office, sent to the Courier News and Tap into Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the five, the United States of America, and to the republic which is standing on the nation under God, individual liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call.
Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Desai? Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Malfetta? Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor? Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Yeah?
Ms. Keller.
Letting you get yourself situated. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10 4-11 permits the Board of Education Okay, good. to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, Motion to return to public session? now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain?
to discuss a matter rendered confidential by federal estate law,
The board is back in open session. Ms. Keller?
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes a matter involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds. of the September 16th, 2024 board meeting. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes.
Do we have a second?
I guess.
And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made of it public Second. when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
All in favor?
Mrs. Dalton?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? The board is now in executive session.
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Mingle, correspondence and information.
I have no correspondence to report. On the HIB report, we had four investigations in the district, two founded, one at Mount Horrib and one at the middle school, and two not founded, one at Central School and one at Woodland School. On the suspension report, there were four independent suspensions, one out of school and three that were a combo of in-school and out of school, so they show up on both tallies there. And that's it for that section.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Hello, good evening and welcome to the October 28th Warren Board of Education meeting. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Warren Township Youth Commission for its grant in the amount of $6,000 to be utilized for a team-building conflict resolution program for sixth-grade students. The grant appears on tonight's agenda for approval as item B8. I would also like to draw attention to B9, which recommends for board approval a shared services agreement between the Warren and Watchon Hills High School Boards and represents another example of cooperation and collaboration between the two districts. Also appearing on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the retirement of our Mount Horrib nurse, Doris Sanchelli. She will be missed, and I wish her a wonderful retirement after her many years of service. Big reminder, on November 4th, now that's next Monday, everybody, the Warren Township School District will be holding two strategic planning sessions for community members to attend. That means the entire Warren community, not just the school community. So whether you now, or ever, or never had children in our schools, you're still invited and welcome to participate, and your involvement is very needed. You will be asked for your feedback about the current state of the district and the vision for the future. Sessions will be facilitated by expert consultants who are gathering ideas from staff, students, and all of you out there in our community to advise the Warren Township Board of Education on the strategic plan development. The meetings on Monday, the 4th, take place at 1:15 in the afternoon. That is during school being in session, and if you choose that option, you do need to bring identification. And 6:30 in the evening. More information about these sessions are available on the township, on the district's website. Please, please, please spread the word. We'd really like to see representation from all key stakeholders in our community. Now I have a couple of really cool things I want to share, so bear with me. Each year, the most innovative programs in New Jersey schools earn recognition in the New Jersey School Boards Association's Annual School Leader Award Program. The School Leader Award showcases creative and effective programs that New Jersey schools are implementing to enhance student achievement. This year, congratulations is due to the Warren Township Schools Capstone Experience. The Warren Township Schools Capstone Experience is an innovative educational program designed to engage students in critical thinking, problem-solving, and real-world applications of their learning. The primary goals of the program are to encourage critical thinking and problem-solving, foster collaboration and teamwork, develop oral communication, public speaking, and media literacy skills, and promote goal-setting and personal accountability. And it's a big ask, and these kids knock it out of the park every year. It provides students with the opportunities to showcase their knowledge and skills through interdisciplinary projects focused on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, a set of universal goals that meet the urgent environmental, political, and economic challenges facing our world. Focused on grades five and eight, students have shown significant improvements in critical thinking, problem-solving, and communication skills. So congratulations are due to the administrators, the teachers, the students of our district who make the Capstone Experience program happen. And thank you to the New Jersey School Boards Association for recognizing out of all the programs in the state of New Jersey that our Capstone project is one of the best and most innovative. So congratulations to all. Now I have something truly special. Annually, the Dr. Ernest L. Boyer Outstanding Educator Award is presented by the NJ ASCD to an educator who has made a major contribution to the field of education and who exemplifies the vision, leadership qualities, and the commitment to the improvement of education that characterized the career of Dr. Boyer. Dr. Ernest L. Boyer had a remarkable career that spanned four decades as one of the most articulate and well-reasoned voices in the history of American education. He was highly regarded as an instructor, director, educator, and most influentially, a gifted leader whose impact on education has been formidable and lasting. As United States Commissioner of Education, President of the Carnegie Foundation for the Achievement of Teaching, and Chancellor of the State University of New York, Dr. Boyer's profound influence shaped and reformed national and international understanding of education. The award bearing his name serves to recognize and honor Dr. Boyer's accomplishments, inspire the recipients to embrace the qualities and characteristics required to advance the profession, and encourage other educators to aspire to make a difference in the education of youth to shape a better future. Nominees for this award must be actively involved in the field of education in the state of New Jersey, demonstrate the vision, the courage, the leadership, and the commitment to improvement of the educational system in the state of New Jersey that has resulted in the active promotion or adoption of fundamental change or changes in statewide policy and/or practices in the field of education. They must be a person whose contributions and reputation is widely known and respected in New Jersey, and a person who's engaging and inspiring leadership, motivates and impacts colleagues and community. The NJ ASCD annually receives many nominations for this prestigious honor, and the list of past recipients is an impressive list of the most influential educators in the state. It is with profound honor that on behalf of the Warren Township Board of Education, I congratulate this year's recipient of the Dr. Ernest L. Boyer Outstanding Educator Award, our own Dr. Matthew Mingle. Superintendent's remarks?
I like the parts where we recognize the students a lot better, which we'll do in just a minute. So, thank you for your kind words. It's an honor to be considered in the esteem of the people who have received that award before, and I appreciate the board's support for sure, and everybody in our community. It's hard to then transition into my comments, but I just want to reiterate a couple of things that Mrs. Zahn shared tonight. First, the strategic planning, community input sessions. As Mrs. Zahn mentioned, November 4th, if you're looking to RSVP, which is not required in advance, but if you are looking to RSVP, That's very easy to get on the website. And also to reiterate and congratulate all of our staff and students involved in the Capstone Experience. Mr. Kimmich couldn't be here tonight, but under his leadership and many others, that's really been something that we've been proud of going back to 2018. And so we're happy to see it recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association. I think that's it for me for right now.
Okay, then. We do have two presentations listed, only one of which is proceeding tonight. That's the second one, and I will turn that over to...
Turn it over to Mr. Valar.
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Valar.
Good evening, Dr. Mingle, members of the board. Thanks for having us here tonight. In a moment, I'm going to bring up and introduce Kate Farina, who is the representative of the American Heart Association. In total, we have a great story to share with you tonight, something that just we watched happen last year unfold here within the school for a student who's brand new to us, Brendan Valaslove, who came to us from Hillsborough with an idea, and he said, "I want to raise money for the American Heart Association." And he partnered with Lisa Lontei and our student government to create this experience, and it just wound up being absolutely spectacular for him, for SGA, and for the whole school in terms of the net result of what occurred. So I'm going to, I'll actually have Katie come up now and... Your thing.
Perfect timing. I thought that the doors were locked. So I was patiently waiting to get in. Let me see if I could lower this a little bit. Or take it off. You know what? Take it off, because this is what I do during the assemblies. Well, good evening. I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here with you tonight. Like Principal Valar said, I'm Katie Farina with the American Heart Association. I'm the local representative for our school engagement team. And to kind of recap what Principal Valar had said and what led us to this moment here, at the beginning of the year, Nurse Lontei and Brandon, student here at Warren Middle School, reached out to me in hopes of bringing a new and exciting program to the school where we could also spotlight and highlight one of the amazing teachers here who had undergone a heart transplant while also promoting heart health within the school community. We met a few times to discuss and kind of plan out what we wanted this program to be and what we wanted to look at.
Mentioned to B nine, which recommends for board approval, a shared services agreement between the Warren and Watchen Hills High School Boards. And represents another example of cooperation and collaboration between the two districts. Also appearing on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the retirement of our Mount Hore of Nurse Doris Sanchelli. She will be missed, and I wish her a wonderful retirement after her many years of service. Um, big reminder, on November fourth, now that's next Monday, everybody. The Warren Township School District will be holding two strategic planning sessions for community members to attend. Um, that means the entire Warren community, not just the school community. So whether you now or ever or never. Um, had children in our schools, you're still invited and welcome to participate and your involvement is very needed. You will be asked for your feedback about the current state of the district and the vision for the future. Sessions will be facilitated by expert consultants who are gathering ideas from staff, students and all of you out there in our community. To advise the Warren Township Board of Education on the strategic plan development. The meetings on Monday, the fourth take place at one fifteen in the afternoon. That is during school being in session, and if you choose that option, you do need to bring identification. And six thirty in the evening. More information about these sessions are available on the township, on the um, district's website. Please, please, please spread the word. Uh, we'd really like to see representation from all key stakeholders in our community. Now I have a couple of really cool things I want to share, so bear with me. Each year, the most innovative programs in New Jersey schools earn recognition in the New Jersey School Boards Association's annual school leader award program. The school leader award showcases creative and effective programs that New Jersey schools are implementing to enhance student achievement. This year, congratulations is due to the Warren Township Schools Capstone Experience. The Warren Township Schools Capstone Experience is an innovative educational program designed to engage students in critical thinking, problem solving, and real world applications of their learning. The primary goals of the program are to encourage critical thinking and problem solving, foster collaboration and teamwork, develop oral communication, public speaking and media literacy skills, and promote goal setting and personal accountability. And it's a big ask, and these kids knock it out of the park every year. It provides students with the opportunities to showcase their knowledge and skills through interdisciplinary projects focused on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. A set of universal goals that meet the urgent environmental, political, and economic challenges facing our world. Focused on grades five and eight, students have shown significant improvements in critical thinking, problem solving, and communication skills. So congratulations are due to the administrators, the teachers, the students of our district who make the Capstone Experience program happen. And thank you to the New Jersey School Boards Association for recognizing out of all the programs in the state of New Jersey that our Capstone project is one of the best and most innovative. So congratulations to all. Now I have something truly special. Annually, the Dr. Ernest L. Boyer Outstanding Educator Award is presented by the NJ ASCD to an educator who has made a major contribution to the field of education and who exemplifies the vision, leadership qualities, and the commitment to the improvement of education that characterized the career of Dr. Boyer. Dr. Ernest L. Boyer had a remarkable career that spanned four decades as one of the most articulate and well reasoned voices in the history of American education. He was highly regarded as an instructor, director, educator, and most influentially, a gifted leader whose impact on education has been formidable and lasting. As United States Commissioner of Education, President of the Carnegie Foundation for the Achievement of Teaching, and Chancellor of the State University of New York, Dr. Boyer's profound influence shaped and reformed national and international understanding of education. The award bearing his name serves to recognize and honor Dr. Boyer's accomplishments, inspire the recipients to embrace the qualities and characteristics required to advance the profession, and encourage other educators to aspire to make a difference in the education of youth to shape a better future. Nominees for this award must be actively involved in the field of education in the state of New Jersey, demonstrate the vision, the courage, the leadership, and the commitment to improvement of the educational system in the state of New Jersey that has resulted in the active promotion or adoption of fundamental change or changes in statewide policy and or practices in the field of education. They must be a person whose contributions and reputation is widely known and respected in New Jersey, and a person who's engaging and inspiring leadership motivates and impacts colleagues and community. The NJ ASCD annually receives many nominations for this prestigious honor, and the list of past recipients is an impressive list of the most influential educators in the state. It is with profound honor that on behalf of the Warren Township Board of Education, I congratulate this year's recipient of the Dr. Ernest L. Boyer Outstanding Educator Award, our own Dr. Matthew Mingle. Superintendent's remarks.
I like the parts where we recognize the students a lot better, which we'll do in just a minute. So thank you for your kind words. It's um, it's an honor to be considered in the esteem of the people who have received that award before, and I appreciate the board's support for sure, and and everybody in our community. It's hard to then transition into my comments, but I just want to reiterate a couple of things that Mrs. On shared tonight. First, the strategic planning, community input sessions. Uh, as Mrs. On mentioned, November fourth, if you're looking to RSVP, which is not required in advance, but if you are looking to RSVP, tinyurl.com slash Warren Strategic one fourteen, that's very easy to get on the website. And also to to reiterate and congratulate all of our staff and students involved in the Capstone Experience. Uh, Mr. Kim could couldn't be here tonight, but under his leadership and many others, that's really been something that we've been proud of uh, going back to two thousand eighteen, and so we're happy to see it recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association. I think that's it for me for right now.
Okay, then. Um, we do have um, two presentations listed, only one of which is proceeding tonight. That's the second one, and I will turn that over to who am I turning it over to?
Turn it over to Mr. Valar.
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Valar.
Uh, good evening, Dr. Mingle, members of the board. Thanks for having us here tonight. In a moment, I'm going to bring up and introduce uh, Kate Farina, who was the representative of the American Heart Association. In total, we have a great story to share with you tonight, something that um, just we watched happen last year unfold here within the school for a student who's brand new to us, Brendan Valaslove, who came to us from Hillsborough with an idea. And he said, I want to raise money for the American Heart Association, and he partnered with Lisa Lontai and our student government to create this experience. Uh, and it just wound up being absolutely spectacular for for him, for SGA, and for the whole school uh, in terms of the the net result of what occurred. Um, so I'm gonna, I'll actually have Katie come up now and uh, give her thing.
Perfect timing. I thought that the doors were locked, so I was patiently waiting to get in. Um, let me see if I could lower this a little bit. Or take it off. You know what? Take it off, because this is what I do during the assemblies. Well, good evening. I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here with you tonight. Um, like Principal Valar said, I'm Katie Farina with the American Heart Association. I'm the local representative for our school engagement team. Um, and to kind of recap what Principal Valar had said and what led us to this moment here. At the beginning of the year, Nurse Lontai and um, Brandon, student here at Warren Middle School, reached out to me in hopes of bringing a new and exciting program to the school where we could also spotlight and highlight one of the amazing teachers here who had undergone a heart transplant, while also promoting heart health within the school community. We met a few times to discuss and kind of plan out what we wanted this program to be and what we wanted to look at like at this middle school. Um, it was through the American Heart Challenge and under the guidance of Nurse Lontai and the Student Government Association that Warren Middle School students were able to learn valuable skills related to maintaining healthy bodies and also the importance of hands-only CPR. This program not only provided assistance and essential knowledge around mind, body, and heart health, but it also empowered the students and the families to learn how to take action in an emergency. Unfortunately, there is a lot of statistics out there that are quite alarming. Um, nine out of ten individuals who suffer cardiac arrest outside of a hospital will not survive. And with that, we find that the statistic of individuals who are willing to help in those situations is only at about thirty-five percent. The number is increasing, but it's still less than half of those out there in the United States. Through this initiative, we reached over two hundred twenty families to provide them with heart healthy information upon registering. Not only that, but eighteen families learned the lifesaving skill of hands-only CPR. We know that it's not just one or two individuals living in the household, and so not that number is much higher than eighteen. Um, we're extremely grateful to those who did learn it, because we know that those might be some families that have already learned that skill, and they're now relearning it and retraining themselves. And for other families, that's something brand new to their household. With that being said, I'd like to thank the entire Warren Middle School team, Principal Valar and Vice Principal Mensinger for saying yes to this program and helping us build a nation of lifesavers. A huge thank you to Nurse Lontai and to the Student Gover- Government Association for their hard work and dedication, and to Brandon V for leading the way and suggesting that this program be implemented at the middle school level. I'd like to present the entire Warren Middle School team with this award. As just a few weeks ago, I know that some of them were able to join us on our virtual call, but they were nationally recognized as the American Heart Challenge Rookie of the Year. On top of that, Warren Middle School placed number six in the region as one of the top American Heart Challenge schools, raising over eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for the American Heart Association. And that is a result of the entire school community. So congratulations, Principal Valar, um, Vice Principal Mensinger, Nurse Lontai, Brandon V, and the Student Government Association for being recognized as the Rookie of the Year. I have, sorry, I have just two more minutes because there is someone here that's special to the American Heart Association. So just one more award to present. Despite being the newest addition to the team, to the middle school community this past year, Brandon quickly made his presence known through his passion for making a positive impact on the lives of those around him. With the American Heart Association holding a special place in his heart, Brandon was no stranger to this organization's annual American Heart Challenge, having participated in the event in Hillsborough. Determined to bring this amazing and meaningful initiative to his new school, Brandon wasted no time reaching out to Nurse Lontai and getting that going in the beginning of the school year. And he was able to successfully introduce it to his peers during the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Recognizing the importance of this cause, Brandon went above and beyond personally reaching out to everyone he knows and encouraging them to participate, whether it was through just awareness or financial contributions to the challenge. His tireless dedication over the years to raising awareness and garnering support for the AHA does not go unnoticed. In fact, this is not the first time Brandon has been honored for his exceptional work, as he had previously received the same award the year prior at his intermediate school in Hillsborough. This middle school community is truly fortunate to have a student like Brandon, whose passion, leadership, and selflessness continue to set an inspiring example for all those around him. Brandon, I would like to invite you and your family up here because you guys, again, this was a national recognition. He was recognized as being the top American Heart Challenge student in the entire nation. So congratulations, Brandon.
Get pictures? Um, we can do it.
You've got the screen right behind you guys. So maybe we'd let's find a different location.
Maybe in front of the uh, yeah, exactly right there.
Yeah, much better. And did you get pictures of the middle school team also with Nurse Lontai and Mr. Valar and you know? Yes, absolutely. Yes, exactly.
As a final remark on the experience that they all went through last year, each year, the student government would pick something, a fundraising cause that they felt was important. In a good year, if we raised between four and six thousand dollars, we were very pleased with the results. So to have this this quantity of money raised by someone who's brand new to us, didn't know the school community, and just absolutely come in and have a a huge impact on us, we've learned a lot from it. We're forever in Brendan's debt. So thank you.
Wonderful.
Just all the amazing things that all our kids do and our professionals do and our administrators and our nurses. Um, thank you. Really, really proud of you guys. Um, we do not have anything on for discussion this evening. Everyone is more than welcome to stay, and no one's required to. So just saying. So we're going to move directly to committee reports. Um, thank you very much. Congratulations for your hard work. Very inspiring. Okay. Chance to get out. We will not have a report on curriculum and technology this evening. That will be carried to the next meeting. So Finance Operations and Security Committee met Monday, October seventh. The uh, committee focused a considerable amount of time on discussions regarding property, uh, potential property acquisition. The committee discussed the need for additional space due to anticipated student enrollment increases and other specialized student needs and strategies for addressing that need. Um, the committee also discussed the impact of the two thousand twenty-five healthcare rates. There will be a December or January update on those rates once open enrollment has been completed. We discussed the um, ongoing uh, talks about a crosswalk across from Woodland School. And the township engineer is pricing the project, and there will be a follow-up meeting regarding cost sharing. Dr. Mingle provided an update on district security procedures, and the committee um, uh, agreed that communications regarding the referendum next year would be handled by the Personnel um, and Communications Committee. And that is all. The next meeting is the eleventh of November. Moving on to Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee, Ms. Keller.
Yep, the committee met on October seventh. And the bulk of the agenda was focused on what Mrs. On just alluded to, communications around several key initiatives that we have going on in the district um, that we want to make sure the public is aware of. So the first and foremost is strategic planning, which Mrs. On covered in her uh, opening. Um, that is the the initiative that helps plan the next five years. Um, there is a series of community workshops being held on November fourth. There will be um, some additional opportunities for public input after that. But we want to make sure that we are uh, doing a good job of making sure that we're communicating that out to the public. Again, what Mrs. On just mentioned, the second big initiative is the zero debt referendum for capital improvement projects. Um, and then our ongoing needs to address growth and potential gaps in our facility facilities that we anticipate having as our enrollment increases. Um, so those are sort of the core three that we know we need to have some um, good focusing on in terms of communications out to the public. Um, we also discussed the importance of making sure that not only parents and family members of households of kids in the district are aware of what's going on, but also people who may never have had kids in the district, who still live here, who also will care about, you know, future decisions. Um, and then we briefly spoke about uh, district events and board member attendance at them at the different schools. Um, this came up during the board retreat conversation at the August board meeting, and the committee suggested that having a a single list of all the events that board members may be interested in attending, having that uh, for all of the events that happen throughout the year would be a good way to make the different board members aware of what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Um, that completes committee reports. Um, we are now moving on to the first opportunity for public commentary. This is the first of two such opportunities. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address, and by directing your comments to the presiding officer, or that's me. Please note that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but it is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So, looking first to the audience, do we have anyone present who would like to address the board on agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Do we have anyone in our Zoom audience that would like to address the board on agenda items? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
The first opportunity for public commentary.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The first opportunity for public commentary is now closed. Moving on to agenda items, Dr. Mingle.
The only thing, excuse me, it's not on the business agenda, but just for the benefit of the public, uh, the the student achievement report, which was on tonight's agenda, has been presented, provided to the Board of Education. It will be publicly presented at the November eighteenth board meeting. I don't have any comments on business items.
Okay. Does any board member have any item for board consideration that they wish to pull for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, Ms. Keller.
Motion to approve items for board consideration, A one through A five, B one through B ten, C one through C twenty, and D one.
Motion.
And roll call.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no unfinished business or new business on tonight's agenda, so we will move directly into the second opportunity for public commentary. This is the second opportunity, and it is open for to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address before beginning. Looking first to the room. Go to the um, podium, please. Yes, please. Yes. And please, um, your name and address first, please.
Good evening. My name is Nipa. Can you hear me?
I can.
Um, Nipa Patel. I reside on fifty-four, Briarwood Drive East. Uh, my child goes to the younger child goes to the Mount Hore of School. Uh, I just have a general, this thing like, uh, just on a general observation, feel like uh, at elementary school level, uh, isn't it, we need to be really uh, uh, focusing more on reading and writing? Uh, I think I know that this this year we have been updated, parents that school is using some new curriculum for reading and writing, but I do feel like if I just sit down and I, my child is in a fourth grade, is a fourth grader. But still, I don't see like he's he's in as in on an adequate standard of basic reading. Not reading, I would say writing. Like if I just tell him to go and sit, sit down and lay down yourself and write a decent uh, for on any topic, three paragraphs or something. I don't see that, you know, what you expect from a fourth grader. Does, I don't see those reserves. So I just would like to understand or want to emphasize if school is putting any more major efforts on improving those, because elementary is a very basic foundation to, you know, and suddenly when they go to the middle school, the expectations are, you know, much more. So I would like to understand the school strategy or the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patel. Do we have anyone who else here? Yes, please go to the podium. Thank you.
Hi, Kevin Brodsky, Zee Snider Road. Um, I've got a couple of topics I wanted to address that aren't on the agenda, but you guys have touched on them in uh, at least last month's meeting. First is moving the board uh, elections from November to April. Um, um, you know, very cognizant of and respectful of the, I think, good reasons to do that. Um, but I also think that there are countervailing reasons that I think are even stronger not to do that, and I'd like you guys to consider them when you make your decision. First is uh, fiscal responsibility. Um, I've asked for the cost, the projected cost of the uh, the elect, I'm sorry, the elections. Um, I know Mr. Heagle's out, and I haven't gotten a response. I did read online a um, an article that suggested that the cost could be up to thirty thousand dollars to do that. For the sake of today's argument, let's say it's half of that. Let's say it's fifteen thousand dollars. Um, my question would be, isn't it better to spend that money on our children than moving the election to April? Um, I'm sure, and I certainly would hope that everybody on that dais could think of a boatload of things that that money could be spent on instead of a, an April election. I don't know, and I'd like you to ask yourself when you eventually vote on this, and I, all of you will, because you'll all be here in January. Um, could you explain to one of our students that you're going to spend fifteen thousand dollars to move a Board of Education election to April rather than spend it on something that would benefit them educationally? And I know it's a small fraction of the fifty million dollar budget that we have. A cynic might ask, if you're willing to waste fifteen thousand dollars on that, what else are you guys wasting money on? I'm not quite that cynical, but I would ask you to really think hard about the decision to spend that money. I think it's an unnecessary expenditure, and the money could be spent better. Um, and I sat back in this room in March with the Finance Committee, so I understand the financial constraints that this board is facing. Um, and I would certainly suggest and submit that you guys should think hard about spending that money. Again, I know it's not a lot. Second reason, disrupting our school schedule. The moving the board election to April would present two options, and I think it's a catch twenty-two for the board. Option one is, given the recent policy changes regarding um, closing school on elections, which I will tell you I personally disagree with. And by all accounts, the June primary election showed that it can be done safely while keeping schools open. But that being put aside, um, it's a catch twenty-two. Either you have to close schools in April on the third Tuesday of April for no, for no valid reason. I I know, I'll wrap up, although I I'm going to ask to come back.
Um, that's fine.
So, uh, unless you just want me to forego that. Um, so you either got to close schools in April. Um, and I think that based on the parents that I And I think that based on the parents that I talked to, everybody's sick of getting additional holidays at this point. I think if we keep getting new days off, we're going to have the kids in school on August 1st soon. So you either have to close schools, or you have to, as was mentioned by Ms. Zahn, I think, it would be before-school and after-school hours. And I think there's a real concern about, about reducing voter turnout. And I don't think it's to our benefit. Now, it was mentioned that it's expected that 10% to 20% of the citizens would actually show up to vote in an April election. And that keeping, that limiting the poll hours to before and after-school would even further reduce that. So I think when you guys are voting on this, should really consider whether or not that's worth it. And then finally, on this point, I would also submit that we may be trying to solve a problem that really doesn't exist. This year, this election next week, we've got two seats, we've got two incumbents that are going to be reelected, one new board member. Last year, we were three incumbents for three seats. It's two, it's two years ago, the last time we had a contested election for the Board of Ed. Is this really worth it?
Thank you, Mr. Brotsby. You'll have another opportunity after Zoom if you want. Okay. Is there anybody on the Zoom audience that would like to speak to any matter? I'm not seeing any hands in our Zoom audience. Okay, I'm going to go back to our in-person audience. Does anyone in person have an additional comment they'd like to make? Please go to the podium.
Thank, Kevin Brotsby, Z8 Snyder Road. Thanks for letting me go over three minutes on the last one, by the way. All right, so second topic I wanted to talk about, also not on the agenda, but I think it's probably one of the most important topics you guys are going to deal with in the next year or two. Maybe even sooner, based on what I heard last, last month, is the proposal to expand preschool access and build an early childhood education center. I know that it really hasn't been up for public discussion. It's, it sounds like it might be in an early phase. But it also sounded to me like it's at a, even though it might be at an early phase, it's also a very real thing that has to be dealt with. Because Dr. Mingle had said that we're going to learn in the coming weeks whether or not we get that, that state funding, and we're going to have to decide if we're going to take it. And if we take it, we're going to have to accommodate all three or four, and four-year-olds in town for preschool. Now, obviously, there are good reasons to, to provide preschool access to children. I'm not here to talk about that. I think it's a terrible idea. I'm not going to sugarcoat that. And those of you who know me know that I'm not much on sugarcoating. I almost fell out of my chair when I was watching that video of last month's meeting, because at one minute, one hour and 11 minutes into the meeting, Dr. Mingle, who I like, by the way, and this isn't a shot at you, and I know I'm only supposed to speak to Mrs. Zahn. One hour, 11 minutes into the meeting, Dr. Mingle said that we cannot accommodate the students we expect to get in this district between now and 2035. And not more than, not, and not even two minutes later, proposed building an early childhood education center that doesn't solve that problem. Not only does it not solve that problem, but it, it adds a host of increased problems that we're going to face. And I think, and what I want to do is I want to make sure and that you guys really, really take this seriously, because it's going to cost a ton of money. And I don't know that the public is going to be aware of that. It's probably, I'm going to guess, it's probably the biggest capital expenditure that this district would make in decades. And again, I recognize the benefits of providing early childhood education, but do our taxpayers really have the appetite in the wallet for that? Because it sounds to me like if we build this, it doesn't solve the problem of over, of increased enrollment at the schools, and we're going to be here in years from now, you know, two, three, four, five years from now, asking to build out the schools that we already have. I don't think it's a cost we should take lightly. I'm just going to throw out a couple, and, and I, listen, I hope you guys have robust discussion about this. I really do. And I would ask just a couple of questions that I hope you guys consider. You know, do the constituents want this? Why are we spending on some money on something that doesn't solve our current and projected facility problems? Given the nationwide and statewide teacher shortages, how likely is it that we'll be able to staff 20 new classrooms with quality teachers? Are we doing, and this isn't a shot, but I, I, you know, I got to ask it. Are we doing such a great job educating our K-8 students that we can shift our focus from that, from excelling at that, to now diluting our focus to adding early childhood education? And I know we have it now, but this would be a massive expansion of it. And are we prepared to put our current community preschools out of business? Which I think is something that maybe isn't at the forefront of everybody's mind. Thank you, guys, for indulging me. I really appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Brotsby. Since we went back to the in-person one extra time, I'll also give Zoom one extra shot here. Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close public commentary?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Second public commentary is now closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have any comments?
Just a general comment. So all of the public commentaries made tonight, I think, are the exact kinds of things we'll be talking about in strategic planning. And I know one of the public commentators will be very active in that process, but for anybody watching the video or anything else, please come on November 4th if you can. And if you can't, one thing we didn't say at the top of the meeting is there will be a survey for all community members, those with and without children in the schools, and staff and students, actually, after that date in early December, so that we can get that kind of feedback from everybody. Because, as you said, Mr. Brotsby, the, whatever happens for the next five years in the district has to come out of that strategic planning process of what is it that the community believes are the highest priorities. And as far as the, the comments about reading and writing, if you haven't already spoken to your child's teacher, I encourage you to start there. But I'll, I'll shoot a message over there as well, but we can connect offline as well. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, abstained. The board is now adjourned.